Thank you. Gee, I wish it was.
What's that?
You get the chip and see the road complaint.
I've heard a couple.
I was kicked through auction, went down port there and cut back one thirty-two across. Yeah, then while we scramble. Does, but that's all right.
We stay warm since.
Yeah, sure. Every five days a G P S.
And there's a lot of traffic.
Hmm. Two of China. Oh, go. Next step. Five. Everybody on Thursday.
I don't know any golf thing.
They're botched. Man.
Nice grab. The center, the center is pretty loose, travel lanes pretty, pretty bad.
Good morning. How are you?
On the unit.
You stayed up to watch the tide. On that. Looking back, Chris.
Well, it's.
He should have won.
He's blue one.
It was a tie.
No one.
No, seriously?
Go to the new.
One over ten.
Overdime.
Long time, I'm not a football person, obviously.
Injured costing them too much money.
Backers opened up. Johnson, and then all of a sudden. I got what's going on in that. That calls please. Please.
Yeah.
They were doing one of the guys.
It's a don't.
He was the wet. So that's about your progression. No, the mic didn't surprise us.
What's that?
I had some.
This one?
Oh, not sure. I thought you were looking at.
No, this one here is sometimes interesting.
Yeah.
It happened to be more than one reason. I get a kick out of all of that vision here stuff. Things like that, just costumes. Who's wearing my?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
They don't speak school.
Looks different. It's a taxpayer.
I was gonna say though.
Prime and end it.
You can imagine when they. His quarter house. That's. It was over the top. But you know, there's. There were a lot of money. What was this? What she sent me an email on this?
I didn't look at it.
You know, loan was. We met this.
Oh.
Hey.
I just hope. I just thought said attention.
Yeah. It's certainly.
Oh, so we may need to do this. We're not going to call it up. Someone else gets. Many songs that came up. Okay, we did that one. She came in from morning before lunch break. All like. Don't discipline. He didn't say a word. Oh. Back to work. So to this. I have to say so. So I like. So. So I'll pan down. And. It's probably. Yeah. Spent a lot of time in those.
Oh, yeah. It's just about the maze.
Oh. It gets rid.
That was. Hey, you know. See this.
Yeah.
School, high school, school. I'd see her go off.
Got to kiss. About being fired.
Through. Um, yeah. Yeah.
What's my name? Do you all want to choose from stamps? What allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full meeting order with everyone present. First item on the agenda this morning, Chris Tungel from the regional housing updates. Recording.
How are you guys today?
Recording.
How are you?
Not too bad. You have me furthest on the edge.
Excuse me a second. The meeting is being recorded. If you choose not to be recorded, you have the option to leave. There you go.
All right.
Now it's all yours.
Sounds good. Thank you for putting me on. Yeah. So, yeah, I want to get over here and make sure you guys had some updates. Um, what is going on this year and what things are looking like for the next. Um, so this year, uh, again, uh, we're looking at getting our next, uh, funding for the Housing Trust Fund in twenty-six. So I kind of put a letter together.
Anybody else that wants a copy or put them on the table and they can pick them up?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, your copies.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Chris.
I.
We usually have people sit here.
Yeah. Sure.
Thank you.
I'll stand if you don't mind.
That's fine.
So, uh, again, we're, uh, sending this up, uh, kind of like a letter, what you have seen in the past years, but this is not a request letter, being that you guys have already committed to the three years already. Uh, I, you have another platform here, so chose, uh, an additional download order, whatever, just for your reference. Um, but anyways, uh, again, twenty-five percent match, uh, for twenty-six to come. Uh, this year, though, was a very busy year. Um, we had about two hundred and sixty-three thousand twenty-two-ten spent in Winnebago County here alone. Um, I currently have, uh, another program that's going to be starting soon for first time home buyers. Um, so we have the trust fund part of that, which has also got the first time home buyer program, but we all have another one that just came out from my finance authority, which I've had in the past. And I work pretty closely with a, with a number of the banks here in town and so on and so forth. So it's a great opportunity to get people some assistance to get in their first home. So it's a pretty good, uh, program all in all. Uh, like I said, uh, this year, um, a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent. So it's pretty good return on investment, I would say. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, overall, I did run some numbers since two thousand and ten. It's been, uh, about a little over five million dollars spent here in the county in terms of the trust fund and how it was. Um, the last few years have been really doing well. I do anticipate, uh, getting another round of funding from Federal Home Loan Bank again. So that is also another repair program for, um, anybody that's disabled over the age of sixty-two or is a veteran. So, um, so that's what I anticipate for next year. This year, we received twenty-nine of them and got quite a few of them here in Winnebago. So, uh, again, used the biggest, uh, thing to, uh, any of the programs that I provide is you are your own best advertiser. Uh, I can do as much as I can. Um, but you guys are the ones that are out and about and know people and can share this information. So if you do, um, have anybody of interest, uh, you know, just let them know that, hey, maybe this is a good idea. And whoever is going out, you know, when you're talking to, um, you know, your county engineers and some of the road workers, they know what's going on out there in the rural areas in terms of who needs what or whatever. Um, so maybe that's a great way to get some of our rural homes, um, worked on, uh, this year. It's gonna do a lot of that. Moving over. Um, this is a little write-up that I had, um, put together for our newsletter and various other things. Uh, doesn't have all the nice graphs, but it does have some nice pictures on the back and people projects here and there. Uh, this last year, um, we served roughly a hundred and twenty-seven homes. So I didn't even put the number of people that was, but it was a lot. Um, I don't think there's ever been to this scope, uh, done. It's about two point four million, um, as of date. Um, I anticipate around three million for the region by the end of the year. Um, but the biggest takeaway from this that I, you know, put together, and I've been trying to, you know, put that in a whole scope of, of what it really means, the, the matching, you know, amount of money that is given to the Northeast River Region Housing Trust Fund is just a small piece. And when it's all said and done, if we actually run the numbers, you put in the labor, you know, um, that comes along with it, because this is way more than just, you know, a contractor going out fixing the home. There's insurance agencies, there's banks that have mortgages. There's, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. It actually comes out to be, you know, for that amount of money, almost six to seven million dollars worth of direct and indirect investment that is had within our communities. And being that, uh, you know, we core, um, especially being the precipice of, you know, population and kind of a center, you know, of Winnebago County and really the region, you know, it's not that money gets returned. So, um, I don't really hire contractors outside of the area. I know I worked with Oliver and like I said, local bankers. Insurance agencies, I'm trying to get them more on board because boy, it, if they don't, if everybody only could understand how this all pieces together, it's unbelievable. And, uh, so anyways, I don't want to waste a lot of your time. I talk fast, but.
Could you refresh me those five counties? What are the counties in the region?
So it's Elm key, um, Winnebago, Howard, Clayton and Fayette. Questions? I'm looking at another one potentially for next year through the USDA for, um, rural, um, water. So, uh, wells and stuff like that. I don't know if we'll get it, but I think it has a really good shot. So I may be reaching out to a few of you guys.
What grant is that?
It's a USDA decentralization. Um, now it is a long one. We'll just call it that. Um, but basically it's set up as a revolving loan type fund too, so we can continue doing this over the years. Um, we kind of like these, uh, trust fund programs that do have a revolving loan fund. Um, that way that money keeps coming back. It's not necessarily a forgivable with all. Payback on them and then you can keep getting that done because I get a lot of that right now and we've been able to help some of our, um, folks out, especially in the rural areas on the farms and stuff like that where, you know, it's getting to be pretty pricey for a well to be put in or septic or anything else. So with the repair program that I had, along with a little bit with the trust fund and so on and so forth, I've been able to do some of that stuff. But, uh, this one specifically is for wells. So, you know, as time goes on, you know, hopefully I can get that one, but something I'm, you know, looking at. So. Yeah. No, no hard questions?
You guys have any questions?
All right. Keep up the good work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a great program.
Any, anytime you guys do want me to come back and update you or give you anything, just holler. I give you numbers or whatever you may need.
Yeah, Chris, if you get an update on that well program, just shoot us an email. So because we do come across that with people out.
You do, and it's going to be more and more. Absolutely. Yeah. Yep. So. We'll do. And I don't know. Like I said, I got another, um, updated pledge letter here. If, uh, anybody would like that one, we believe that. And if you so chose, um, I am really wanting to keep going. And so the more we get in terms of the match from all our communities. So if you get out and you have connections with some of the smaller communities that may or may not give, um, might want to talk to them a little bit, you know, I'm not, I don't want to ask for the moon, but, you know, at the same time, every little bit does count. And this is the hard time of the year because, you know, community action sending me people left and right daily because they're already out money for, you know, repair work on furnaces and stuff. And I am too for the most part, you know, so if I can take these dollars and figure out how to stretch them further, I'll be able to do so, which I got a good plan starting in twenty-seven, but, um, gotta wait till then, I guess. So.
Wasn't able to reach, uh, give an update to all the counties?
I've thrown out there. Uh, you guys are the first on the list, actually, that I have. So I've got a lot of them that will be coming, um, as time moves on.
You could get six of them at one time.
Yeah, that's an option.
Yeah.
Maybe next time we can inform you.
Yeah.
Second county meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Little supervisors are there.
Sure.
You could do us one door.
That would be a good one.
We do actually have one.
Kekasaw is the only one that isn't in your area.
That's fine. All right. Yeah.
It's October nine.
Yes.
That one this. Weeks on Thursday is the one through this quarter or whatever.
Okay, yeah. That's all a great idea. I don't know if I get on there. But yeah, that would absolutely. All right. Well, thank you. Like I said, if you have any other questions, just tell it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
If you want to get on, you can just call, uh, Casey down at the engineer down at Clayton County.
Uh, Clayton?
Yep.
Yeah, next business done and talk to her.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, thank you very much. Stop with the, stop with the bakery wine down there.
Absolutely. I'm in contact with, um, you guys. Uh, Casey Sticker in Clayton County asked for agenda items from board supervisors. Um, Martin Aren't with the LAHE is going to be on the agenda. So maybe you guys could share a time because you do work in partnership.
Yeah.
So why don't I call you after I talk to Martin and Casey?
That's on great. Yeah.
Just waiting to hear back this morning.
That meeting's slated to start at eight AM, I do believe.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll be in contact with you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Uh-huh. You're welcome.
Have a good day.
Yep. Consent agenda, Ben?
All I have is.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda. Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose they decide. Passes unanimously. The committee reports?
So from Northeast Iowa Community Action, just adding on what I just shared. Uh, Martin Aren't is the head of the LAHE, the Home Heating Assistance Fuel Program. So when Casey asked for supervisor agenda items, I contacted him and said, would that be something you'd be interested? He said, absolutely. Let's get in contact. So we're working on a time for Martin right now. So Martin and Chris will come at the same time. It makes sense with their two different things they do for low income homeowners in our region.
They overlap.
They overlap. I had Northeast Iowa Behavioral Health last week. Um, we're going to be meeting again on October twentieth as a finance committee meeting to go over some concerns and, uh, looking at their overall budget.
We have a CSS meeting. We are in the polls out and, uh, everything's still kind of on track and everything's still kind of a big, so. Nothing new. You still have some money. End of September is the last day they're going to accept. Charges from providers. You're going to make a hard cutoff on that and then they're going to go to agencies.
Yeah, along with the reformization of the mental health care, behavioral health, um, funding. The problem a lot of places are running into is their Medicaid bills are not being paid. They're providing the services, but they can't get paid for those services with the stupid program at the state level. So it's a real issue right now. Worth looking into. There's a story there in the media. Because our behavioral health clinic is the behavioral health clinic for this region, not just Winnebago County. They have to accept clients. A lot of those clients are Medicare patients, but Medicare is not paying. But they're getting their help. I mean, they're not going to not service clients. So it's a real, real conundrum right now.
It's a kind way to put it.
If that's a, it kind of.
Our next item on the agenda is Mike Cuny, our county engineer with some fuel, little rain quotes and other road project doctors. Morning, Mike.
Glad. Good morning. I guess we'll start off with, uh, and the bid that went out. Recommend going with egg advantage. Egg advantage is putting, uh, their, their, uh, diesel at one, uh, cent above the, uh, rack price. Um, and that, that's cheaper. That's the cheapest. And then their propane gas is also the cheapest. It is a tied with solidated energy. Um, but it usually comes in one bill. So for, uh, just an administrative perspective, uh, recommend that egg advantage be selected for both. Um, so. Wait for contracts.
Anyone like take action on that?
I'd love to approve an, an egg advantage as the, um, contractor.
Sorry. Yeah, motion is second. For egg advantage FS out of Waverly, Iowa for the propane and diesel fuel bits. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimous.
I guess walk through my engineer's report here. Uh, the bill grant, there's nothing new of the sport this week. Couple of things behind the scenes occurred. Uh, what regarding, uh, information from our federal permits coordinator, uh, rubber foot or bridge study, um, ISU will be back on October eighth. That's okay. So the vision is nothing new this week. Uh, I need to contact earnings for, uh, project cutting of the quarry hill road. Nothing has occurred this week. Nestle bike construction is finished. We're still waiting for the seating to create cover. Culvert work on A fourteen east of Hespera has continued last week. Three of the four culverts have been installed. We also have a repair, uh, that is still left to do. Um, and then accounting is patching the concrete itself over top of the, the culverts. So all that work is going on. Uh, the Odyssey over B thirty-two was completed on Thursday. Um, fourteen trucks, five, five packers. Um, right now it looks to be very successful. Uh, lots of, um, complaints are occurring because they're not used to the dust. It looks like a, it looks like gravel road right now. But that will, you know, at the end of this week, it'll be better than it started. And then.
Just gets better as time goes.
It does. And for a finished product, I'm recommending all the, uh, you know, county residents, go check out New Ridge. So, um, yeah, I get, it looks very good. They put the, the little reflectors in, which that's like a Minnesota standard. That's something that we require, but that's, that, that's about. So, um, we got that as a bonus if you will.
Those reflectors hold up in the winter to our plows.
They don't.
They don't. And, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a bid item, but that's just how Minnesota does it. And, uh, so one thing I said in my report is we are procuring quotes to get the, um, striping done as a separate, uh, contract. Um, that was done Friday. And then we'll be doing that in coordination with three hundred and fiftieth street since we've done a lot of the, the concrete patching up there. So we'll try to get some strapping on both of those roads. Um, but.
The city did, uh, reflectors on Locust Road.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a standard.
State. It was nice because it wasn't anything. And also, you know, where your line was supposed to be.
Yes, and that's, that is, it is helpful. It's, it's just, uh, included or designed inside of it. So.
It's a good bonus.
Yep.
Are they doing a patching up on three fifty?
No, we, that, that patching will, will be patching next year on that road.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, we'll, we'll go until, uh, I'm looking at going until the striping, uh, is put on.
They start.
And then finish with that patching then, and then we'll be in our winter month at that point. Um, but that's not, you don't know when it is going to be and we'll be working with a contractor on that striping. So, um, don't have exact answers for you because we just, I just put the quotes out to bed on Friday afternoon.
Oh, okay.
So they have until Wednesday to get back on us. Um, W twenty patches are complete. Uh, I think those were excellent patches that the county did. So congrats to the crew. Um, the Dura Patcher is still going on A fourteen. Um, Bridge three oh seven will be let in December twenty twenty-five. We've done all the paperwork. We're just waiting on, on the DOT to get back to us. Uh, Bridge two E, uh, Southwest, uh, vertical walls in the girl's hop or four last week is on the middle, middle of the section. Um, you have vertical walls and tops to be poured, um, for the inlet and outlet. And, uh, that should happen later in this week, uh, or early next. It's not this week. Uh, Bridge one twenty-six, uh, meet the clearances have been completed. Uh, right away, still needs to be acquired. We're working on that. Frankville Road letting of Bridge one twenty-six. Um, I talked to Nikki with the DOT and she's got any other counties to get the, the annual report out. So please be patient there.
We're W, so we're around the last ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's, she's, there's lots of, lots of new county engineers and her time's been all over the, the, uh, the fall meetings that all districts have. So she's.
Swamped.
She is. Full.
Sixty-nine-nine.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
And then fuel bits, we went over that. Uh, Camel and Rose began striking me. Um, talked about this already. So certainly stripe over the entire county, uh, should be applied. So we, we skipped over a year for that. Um, but we did the whole, we did the whole county this year. Uh, and then we did this up, the flood lines in the southwest, uh, quadrant. So, um, and then I attended the main conference last week on Wednesday and Thursday. That's, uh, Missouri, Iowa. And then I attended the main conference last week on Wednesday and Thursday, that's Missouri, Iowa, Nebraska, Kansas. Lots of. Kind of gear for superintendents and engineers, what I can say, cause this was my first time going to the conference. Iowa is very well put together, the order that, that the DOT and the local system has, has put forth really shows. We have answers to a lot of the questions that some of the other states are having, that was pretty informative of all the things that I walked into, so that's really good to see. Just everything for, things from like. Keeping track of time and keeping track of culverts and. Bridge inventories and all these things that all kind of happen within the service bureau. None of the other states have that, so I was very, it was a very, you know, informative. In contextual conference that way, that being said, I'm not probably looking forward to doing it next year, just. I feel like I'm still catching up from it, so it's, it's a lot to, it's a lot to ask to go down to one of those things, but, but it was still worth. Going at least this one time, so thank you for letting me attend that conference, I appreciate it. And then we have more than a dozen applicants for the Freeport Blade operator position. That was due on Friday. Superintendent and office staff, we narrowed down a couple of candidates. And a couple, I don't mean two, I don't, I don't know exactly how much, but yet, but beginning narrow process. And I'll be looking at that after this meeting, so.
Blade didn't properly, you know, required with that blade experience.
They're not required in the, the application, but that is the, is primary. Because that, this is a, this is a, this area where lots of. Residents are very particular about that, their roads there and it's gonna be necessary that. We get somebody with some experience and we do have some, we have a couple of applicants already with, with blade experience. So, we're looking at those applicants, but that is not, is not a requirement based off of the job description they sent out.
Michael, with, for the public's benefit of. What may seem like a small thing of painting a centerline stripe or a fog line. How much, if you, would you estimate, what does it cost us to go through the county around numbers? Put in the centerline striping and just a portion of the county in fog line in a year's time?
The bids that we got were a hundred and fifty thousand.
It's, it's not a little thing in our budgets, but it's something that for safety has to be done.
Yes, and, and the centerline stripe, unless we have another year where. We do no plowing, that's gonna be kind of an every year thing, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand for just a centerline striking. So, the fog lines were, the quadrants were. Going off of memory here, so. Forty thousand, so.
It's almost two hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's what we're gonna be looking at, striping, it might be a little bit more, that's sold on every four years. Been talking with Camline, it's the contractor, the reflective, the reflectivity. Of those fog lines is, I mean, you can hardly see them, I have to weigh that against the, there is no requirement for fog lines. So, I, that's kind of one of those soft costs that you, you kind of have to weigh and. Every four years is not enough to keep any kind of reflectivity on those fog lines, so. Almanque County does not do their fog, and, and. Everyone I've talked to wants the fog lines, so it's, this is kind of. I, I, someone who used to commute a lot, I appreciate the fog lines, this is not something I'm, I'm, it's not falling on deaf ears.
But for the most part, the fog lines cost about twice as much because you're doing.
That's twice as.
Right, the mobilization and everything are already here, so it, it was already that mobilization. That one hundred and fifty thousand cost, this includes the mobilization, so you're doing a double, you know, double centerline striping and you have some dashed. Or you're doing two fog lines, it's just, you have to go up and down twice, but you're already here. It's not quite a tw- two times.
Yeah, but that's why you only do that one quarter of the county at a time, just because if, if you did the whole county fog lines. You'd probably spend over two hundred thousand.
And just fog lines, yes, yes.
So, again, it doesn't go very far down the road.
Expensive for you to.
Yeah, it's got, it's got the glass beads for the, you know, nighttime reflectivity and everything else, so that's, that's what you're paying for. The taxpayer, but then, and that's what is required by the DOT, is that it has a certain level of reflectivity on.
Ironically.
Collector roads.
They, they don't require the fog lines, but if you do put them down, there's a minimum spec for those lines.
Correct.
I find fog lines are actually more useful in the wintertime, and central line you can't see, but you get. Fog line, at least it keeps between the ditches. But there is no definition.
Did you have a chance to talk to Mike Wise?
I did, I was gonna ask if you wanted to come to the office after.
Well, I can do that.
I have, I'm, I'm ready for you, so.
Looks good.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll stop in after the meeting.
Sounds good, he, he's got everything ready, I think he sent us the emails.
Most everything he's gone on this week.
Correct, so.
That's, we're just looking at. A little addition. Well, the city of Washington has a contract. And that road abuts the county road. But the county road and the city road have an issue where they come down like this, so Washington would like to raise it. And the counties, just a little bit, we're talking about twenty-five, thirty feet.
About thirty, thirty near your feet and then, it's not, it's not a farm to market road or. Anything else, but what we typically do is we pay twenty-two feet for those kinds of roads and. The pavement that exists now is in disrepair, so we're. For, for the amount that we're talking about, it's, it's another concrete patch to our three hundred and fiftieth program. So, definitely wanted to play ball on, on replacing bad pavement.
How's the time to fix the problem?
So, yeah, I mean, there's already pavement operations going on there, I'm, I'm definitely interested in making that a reality, so.
Alright, because they're gonna get back to me with numbers.
Yeah, and I have some questions for you that Mike didn't have, so just wanted to talk that out with you.
Alright, no problem.
Thank you.
That's if, even if it's done yet, but shoot. The bid was put out in March.
Really?
Yeah. He said two weeks.
So you've got your councilman hat on for half of it and county hat on for half of it.
Because. I looked at it and I said, well. We have an issue here, the county wants to fix their part of it, the city's willing to fix their part, we can maybe hash it all on at the same time.
Some of its equipment's there.
Yeah, that's what Mike Wise said, he goes, mobilization if they're there, he goes, it'd be relatively cheap for us. A wise.
I'm glad we can help Washington out.
Well, it helped with both of them, but I said, it has a positive and it has a negative, because right now it's like a huge speed bump coming into town from the south. So it slows everybody down, but you fix this, the speed bump will be going. We have ten minutes to kill.
I haven't been up, the courtroom is, it's done for now.
Till we get it.
Lighting is still.
We still got a date yet for, I'm not sure, I haven't been up, I didn't see John this morning, we gotta, that has to be coordinated with the state.
Did anybody get ahold of either one of you for courthouse for phones in the treasurer's office? About the phone? Phones in the treasurer's office are real, they're having trouble with customers being able to hear back and forth, it's a real bad connection. So I sent it to call the people that work with the courthouse, so you should be getting a call.
That's a loop, that's a loop, you think.
Are those. Over the internet? So it's something with that. And then the other one is. We keep bringing up with the condition of the shingles. John, have you an update on that or?
Nothing out of, nothing out of the hinterlands on that.
Who are we waiting for again?
The architect and the company to come out and do an inspection and a test.
And where are we at on the solar project at community building, anything new?
Any more back if, if between the food bank and spectrum, they want to take, they may wanna.
No.
Make a little bit of a wall move to create some space for spectrums, I mean, for the food bank, nothing yet.
They're gonna have to raise their round, they want square.
That's, they just gotta have a functioning, functioning space to be the main, main thing. You know, they're gonna have a hard time using the non-conditioned garage every winter for putting, storing some extra food, extra stuff until stored in that. That storage, unconditioned storage area.
That's gonna have to come to us to discuss what, yeah, they wanna do, they just can't go ahead and do it.
No, but they've gotta make it.
If they're gonna do it, they gotta make.
They gotta make.
We give them money to do it, I can tell you that, if they wanna do it, they can come up with some.
They can pay for it.
They wanna move something.
Yeah, they did that before, I think they put that wall up for it in there.
It's not really easily blocked off there either, it's.
It's not, it doesn't glow if the ceiling is partitioned wall.
Anything added there, would have to have a ceiling installed in it?
No.
No, this is. Or just build another one.
Yes, really.
It's, right now it just has two slides. Obviously for fire reasons, so.
It's not a security issue.
There comes a bunch of two of them, not get no difference in around.
Well, the food battery has a different rate than the spectrum does.
Yeah, they pay though, they pay nine, so. The other thing with this. We put the, enclosed the stairway over here, but there was patching to do on us. The cement wall was there for bottom out.
Spring on that. We're waiting until spring on that.
Who is this pub could gonna do it?
Let it go through this, let it go through freeze thawing.
Never got ballards here at the edge of the. You were gonna put some ballards at the, so people, yeah, at the edge of the parking area, so people couldn't do like that one guy did. And that, that never happened, I thought maybe it was something they were just waiting.
Yeah, I haven't, I think they're maybe waiting on that, but I haven't heard anymore of this, I forgot about those ballers, yeah.
After the church up in Michigan yesterday.
It wasn't just that one, there was one in. North Carolina.
Yes.
At Oak Island.
Goodness, it's our. Stone building with heavy foundation, which would be a lot harder to track through. But it could still do some damage, so.
This building would be easier.
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Do we have? Any more thoughts on what happened when historical moves out up there, are we gonna use that for? Somebody's gonna use that for long-term storage, but.
Yeah, well, we wondered if. They have a storage unit and things they have stored down there that if they can store up here, then they wouldn't.
Space out, no.
Yeah. That might be one option, I don't think you wanna put any. Office or anything you.
No.
Access any, with any regularity up there, cause the stairway, it's not very convenient.
And I don't think those cubicles would be welcomed by the occupants.
Storage.
But it would, yeah, it'd be good for storage, there's actually quite a bit of stuff in this downstairs.
Could go up.
Court room, they could go out, and there's old court records and things that are just stuffed in there, cause they didn't have any place else to be.
We can put them under lock and key up there.
It's pretty secure.
Ten ten, next item on the agenda, miscellaneous trees for kids grants agreement.
A conservation department prepared the grant agreement with a date on this and they'll take care of the. Reporting and such for the grant, but you'd have to sign as the. World supervisors with whom the grant is.
Need a motion?
A motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and second, to approve the Trees for Kids grant agreement.
This was a. Grant that Conservation Help, John Kraus, Conservation Help, Trees for Kids. It's through the DNR, so it's working with the fifth, I think it's fifth grade middle school. Students will be coming up and getting a tutorial on tree maintenance planting. Valuing and then throughout the day double planting.
Right here on courthouse.
The trees right up here on the courthouse lawn, so, which is good. We were needing to have trees and this helped with that, so it's nice, and it's at no cost to the county. To purchase these trees or saw them, so. It happens, special planting will be happening on the tenth of October. Kind of throughout the day, starting I think around eight thirty or eight forty-five, something like that. First class will be coming up, so it's exciting.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Was opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Steve, did you know? Anymore about the tree removal of that one tree, you've talked to John about that or?
No, I think you talked with. The same one that's been working, we've been working with, but I haven't heard any data on it.
Okay.
See John.
So is that, then potentially these two out here, because we're, they're getting planted, so. I can just let them do.
Mark and I were discussing after last Monday's meeting. The parking lot over here, is there any possible way we widen it a little bit to make? The access in and out a little easier?
That was John's dream, was when those trees come out to move the wall up.
Especially that, well, even that one tree over here, move it up to the sidewalk. Side like that goes.
Courthouse to the street. If we can take out that tree and grass there and make that parking, that join the sidewalk. So the curb would be right where the sidewalk is, it goes down. That, and if you could get two more feet on this side, it would make it two more.
Would make the backing up a lot.
We could, cause of the size of some of these pickups anymore.
Oh, yeah.
They have their work.
You know, and S U Vs and stuff, I mean, is there?
Well, the training really has done some of the larger trucks, online's terrible, yeah, you know, I've got one ton.
No, I, I agree, it should be bigger, going that way, if you're too far, you've got a retaining wall issue.
Yeah, we'll have to put a retaining wall on this side over here and put it into, plan for it into the next, into the twenty-seven budget.
Yeah, something's gonna be done this year, but.
Two feet would make, make, if I mean, anything would make.
It'll be interesting to have Mike's office take a look at what it would take to do that, an estimate of cost.
Mike was.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll bring that up when I go and talk to him.
Till you know of cost, you don't know how realistic it is, you know, it's feasible or not. I don't believe that, if we, if we're only going two feet, we might not need a retaining wall or.
Yeah, I think if you get two feet with all of the.
Or at least a deep curb.
That's on a far.
If you come all the way up in here, though.
May have to do a few feet of the.
Yeah, I'll be retaining one up here. This start, this end drops off pretty fast.
So that would be. Estimate on that. For safety reasons, I mean, despite somebody hasn't got.
I'd ask Mike. To put a, they've got a Jersey barrier sitting out there at the yard across the street from the Freeport shop. Drop it in this corner out here, cause when we get barriers out, we don't have any real plans for barriers here, we can drop that as a temporary. And just protect the corners of this building, to go with all my security recommendations.
Next item on the agenda, Andy Vander Notten, our county attorney. Morning, Andy. We're dryer out today.
It is, yeah.
What do you have for change?
I don't really have anything for you right now, but probably in fifteen minutes or so, we can talk again. Shirley, did you do the opioid report?
That if you read through the third paragraph, you have to read through most of the letter, and there's a sentence involved that says, if you did not.
You notice the.
No, no, not even that, if you didn't utilize them for something not allowed, then you don't have to fill out the report. And I called the number and verified that, and I said, that's true, you do not need to fill out a report, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we'll try to get the opioid task force back working again in October, we've kinda taken a summer hiatus. So that'll get going again.
Yeah, it looks like we have some more money coming in, from different sources, so.
What are some of the other counties spending there on Z?
A lot of them are sitting on them, cause they don't know what to do, uh, that's why I'm so glad that we were able to. Help pay for the mat clinic at Binger Health. For a lot of the people who are dealing with opioid addiction can go for medication and counseling. And I'm hoping we can continue to do that, and we'll talk as a task force and see where other areas we can provide help, according to. A very specific guidelines of where we can spend that money.
That was a ten thousand dollar donation.
But I would say most other counties are either doing Narcan purchases. Help to pay for mat clinics in their areas. Education, kind of like our deer program, our deer program already does a lot of it, so don't wanna double up money. And just throw it at the hat if it's not gonna be something new and different. But the most are sitting on it, cause they don't know what to do with it yet.
Is there a timeline when it has to be used by?
No, not yet.
Yeah. Plus it comes in, some of it is just coming in annual installments, so until you get enough money built up to make it. Worthwhile to do a project, you can't.
Project of some sort, yes.
I think ours is sitting at one sixty-nine, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand approximately right now. The more we can put it to use in the community, the better than having it sit. So we'll see what we can do. And that, like I said, the task force will get back together in October.
What happens if the money is just sitting there, but can I have a county so then?
It's in.
That would be the treasurer's value, but he would invest it in whatever type of.
Interest bearing or whatever.
It is.
And I believe, I don't know exactly, I believe that's one of the funds that the interest has to stay with.
Yeah, no.
In the program, so. So if it sits there, it's making interest to use in the future.
Yep.
What did you say the front balance was?
I believe that's about one hundred and sixty-nine thousand right now. And Narcan, Narcan is so widely available and accessible now, but that's not really a need. We've been in contact with the sheriff's office on that, and they, they have.
They, we.
Why.
Purchased with some Narcan.
Right.
What kind of shelf life does that have?
I don't know what the shelf life.
Three years or something like that, I know that. My daughter had an opioid pain medicine, and they prescribed Narcan. Two, in case she took too much.
Oh, wow.
And it was no charge from the.
Yeah.
That it was covered by.
It's widely available.
State as part of their program, so. But you can keep up that for the three years or whatever.
Yeah, I'll have more to report after our meeting in October.
It's kinda curious how you knew that, but. It's like.
Yeah, I'd like, well, we don't need this, you're getting, but it's like, it doesn't cost anything, and it has a longer, like, clear shelf life, so go ahead. Did you speak in like generic terms about what, after the public hearing, what they might. Might choose during your time, so that they can kinda know, think about that ahead of time?
You can accept a lot of bids, you can reject all of the bids, you can. You could negotiate, I suppose. Yeah, it's been rejected. If you have no interest in the dollar amounts that are being presented to you at this point, or don't see those as acceptable. You could postpone the hearing and negotiate with the two, the three.
Issue.
The two bidders and see if they're going to. Get you a price that is more attractive.
And the bids aren't. Public records until we.
Till you have a public hearing.
So, how would you go about negotiating if we can't? Better off to have a public hearing than negotiate or. Otherwise, you can't really discuss it.
You can discuss it with the bidders, because they know what they bid. Individually.
Gets a little bit harder, because I think on a typical real estate transaction, they make an offer, then you make a counter offer and back and forth until you get to a number you like, but. This is, it's harder for you to do that as the, the way your system is set up, so I don't, we don't really know if either of the bidders are willing to. Make counter offers and increase until we.
And ultimately, you need to. You need to have a number in mind that will. Well, uh, get you through a public hearing and be acceptable. And I don't know that, in closed sessions, I've been involved with that, we've had that discussion.
Talked about some numbers, but I don't think you've ever said this is decided.
Bottom down.
Yeah. So if they. If they don't want to accept either of the bids that as they have been presented, do they still hold the public hearing, or do they?
I think you have the option to hold the public hearing, and then I presume if neither are acceptable, you reject both bids. And then our alternative would be to. Postpone or cancel the public hearing, because we don't have a. That one's not gonna be acceptable. To the majority.
Could they offer to just the two bidders to resubmit bids at a. New minimum or something, if they want to. Continue the process?
You could, and we've done that more in the nature of, I would say, an auction type situation after. Uh, after we see what comes in. And we can see if either both are willing to raise the bids, I guess.
Cause that's what we do with Freeport, we reject.
We reject it. So if they hold the public hearing and then reject the bid, those numbers become public records. And they can then say, well. Does that be a lot? A new bid timeline, a new public hearing, again. To submit bids at higher.
Is one option.
That's one option, yeah. Or you could ask these two if they're willing to come in for an auction, right?
Good. You probably don't wanna close the public hearing at that point, I think you wanna. Leave that option open, because as those numbers, if they do want to raise them, go up, you still have to consider them at the public hearing.
So if that's the option they wanna pursue, after they've opened the public hearing, they could make a motion to continue the public hearing until. Next week or some date and, and invite the two bidders to come for an auction.
We could postpone the public hearing now and see where's.
I think if you're, if the majority of you say this is not a dollar amount that we're. Going to accept as proposed, you could say that we have a receipt bid, so it would be acceptable. We're going to postpone or cancel the public hearing.
Ask the bidders to increase the.
Until a date certain to say, well, we're going to raise it to this, or we're not gonna raise it then.
If they postpone the public hearing, do we? By having it published for today and on the agenda, taking action to postpone it at this meeting, does that mean that? That it doesn't need to be republished, or does it need to be republished, cause that will affect how.
I think you're gonna need to publish, I, I would, I mean.
I'm just thinking then we need two more topics.
Seems to me that you may have. You may wanna open it up to other bidders, potentially to an issue to the two. So like, if you're gonna, if you're staying up on the process, we need a new bid by Friday, you know, October seventeenth or whatever it is. And um. Yeah, we'll postpone the public hearing until the following month. And of course, the risk is you may or may not get.
Any.
Anything.
Yeah.
Any comments from anybody? On their thoughts?
I went to the public.
Well, if you don't, if you hold the public hearing, you may not.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Yes.
If we're gonna postpone the public hearing, it's supposed to start in three minutes, if it's, right now, we all know where the numbers are. If you're not, if there's three people not in favor of the numbers, we might as well postpone the public.
I'm not in favor of them.
Nor am I.
I would say I would, probably. That's, I'm here at this three.
But can we still have the phone open and not close it, and then we can. Then it's easier to talk the numbers rather than.
I think we also need to look at long-term planning for the county. And I know that emergency management and public health are gonna need a building. And access to a building, and we will flood, this valley will flood, not when, if, not if, when. So, we already own a building, a major highway. We're paying forty thousand dollars a year for public health and rent every year.
The shoe's cracked up the floor, because they keep digging the hole deeper down there. Now, if you're looking aside, do we wanna postpone the public hearing? And set a date down the road?
I'm for opening the public hearing, leave it open, so we got the numbers, so we can discuss. That's my opinion, I guess.
Play down just one, but. If we're coming up with a number that we want. We should probably do that in closed session.
Or if you, you could establish a new bid timeline with a new, with a minimum bid, they couldn't.
Without a public hearing.
You'd still have a public hearing, but you could say, like you did the first time you put this out, is you put a minimum bid on it, but nobody bid on it. So, you know that nobody wanted to bid the five hundred thousand that you had on first minimum bid, and if we know these numbers, it's good.
I know that number was a little out there.
Yeah, but that's way. I mean, if you're gonna establish a minimum bid, you can do that in an open session, cause it's gonna go in the public, rep, republic, in the bid documents.
Although you may wanna have a discussion in closed session about how you arrived at that, and what tools you used to.
Can we hold a closed session if they, can we hold one today even though it isn't? Um, specifically say there's gonna be a closed session, since it's related to the same topic as what the public hearing was gonna be.
I don't think so, I think you're.
I'm in favor of that, would you have a closed session next?
Monday.
Monday.
I would be too.
I, I would like to have a serious conversation with John Snyder and Krista about the long-term vision of using that building. As a county building, since we already own it. Before we.
They're, they're willing to use it, I mean, they've said that.
I.
But they don't, they also understand that you have.
Financial.
Financial obligation.
Hundred fifty thousand dollar obligation to pay for.
One idea Sean and I talked about is that, since he has money in the emergency management fund. That he could, he could lease the building to him, at least the portion that he's gonna use. For up to like two hundred thousand, that he could then transfer to us. So we have most of it covered.
Most of that does not cover any renovation, no.
That's, and that's, he doesn't have much more than that to spend, so he'd have to. Then we're looking at another, I hate to guess.
So are we.
Been in there enough times.
Are we postponing this public hearing?
If we do that, I think we need to have, we need to, Shirley's idea of a sit-down work session needs to, I think, needs to happen if we're gonna discuss it at any length.
With parties involved.
In addition to potentially a closed session to discuss value of the building relative to. Other uses, is that fair?
Forty thousand a year for ten years, that's a lot of money in rent.
I would, if you're going to postpone it, I would suggest that you pick it on Monday down the road far enough that the bank can get notices out. That you have a couple of weeks to, to schedule your, your work session, your closed session.
Cause I can't, we can't publish for that public hearing, and if you're gonna put a minimum on the bid, we need to know that before we put it out there, so.
But I think today's motion, if you're going to not hold the public hearing, should be, that it be postponed to. But I think today's motion, if you're going to not hold a public hearing, should be, that it be postponed to a date specifically.
What date works? Well, assuming you have a, if you have a closed session next week, it can establish a number that would, you could set the date for like the twenty twentieth, but the very earliest, but the twenty-seventh, maybe more safely to have time to get it published. I would avoid the third, because I don't want to have that meeting go extra long, because I'll be setting up the election in this room that afternoon, so I don't want to have that meeting drag on extra that morning.
So you're saying twenty-seventh?
Maybe October twenty-seventh, that gives you, or.
October.
That gives you four weeks. We can get it, if I know there's going to be a public notice, and I can get it in, I mean, I could still do that as late as the thirteenth. If I can do it, if we're done by noon with the information. But maybe even next week, if we have a closed session next week, to discuss it, you might know more details by then.
And you could have your session with Krista and Sean ahead of the closed session, and the closed session could discuss not only the value you place on the building, but its use.
Well, if anyone wants to make a motion.
Does that give us enough time if we do it on the sixth, maybe we should do the closed session on the thirteenth?
And then we're going to have.
Why?
If you see that, then the longer we have to go.
I don't know why we want to wait.
Well, it's.
Yeah.
Get it done.
They know.
Well, to get over.
Well, they both, in depth, Krista and Sean have both gone through that all together. And they've given it thought, ready, they've already given it, given it thought. And then they've worked amongst themselves for layouts, usage, how, or whatever, so that's, I don't think, that's a timing issue for them.
I'd entertain a motion to reschedule this public hearing for October twenty-seventh.
I would motion to reschedule a public hearing for the twenty-seventh of October.
Second.
A motion and second to reschedule a public hearing for the sale of Highway fifty-two property until October twenty-seventh. Be further discussion. None, all those in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Does anyone have anything else?
So who will arrange the?
I'll, I'll get Krista and Sean on next week. And a closed session on next week.
So.
In that order.
Do we need to meet with them before that?
Yes, I think we need to meet this week with them.
Yeah. At least two of us need to come this week.
Oh, if you want to do it two persons, I would think that.
Yeah, no, I think that would, I think that would be good work.
And then, then do we still want them on the agenda next, next Monday? And then have them before the closed session, and then after that closed session, we can work with Andy, hopefully to get whatever word should be, public notes to reschedule the public hearing. Putting minimum, or putting whatever that procedure you decide at that closed session.
I'm very open this week.
Yeah, I have met with, I've met with Sean, gone over what he was talking about, what he is, what he has said.
I think maybe Steve and Shirley won't should.
You want to do it together?
I'm fine, this may have been.
Dan, does that work for you?
That's fine. Just give me an update. Actually, my voice, we will talk about it on next Monday.
That'd be great, I motion to adjourn.
Take it.
Motion in the second for turning, and all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
Depending on if they want a minimum or not a minimum. I mean, I have the notice from the last one, so if all they want to do is reopen it without a minimum. Have a few. You need a piece of paper to shut that down. Okay, okay, sounds good.
It's hard to have communication in the public, but we don't have. Don't talk about it for a can.
Sounds good, yeah, I've got some invites out, it's been a very smaller crew this year than last year, obviously, so I've got invites out, but if they don't all pan out, I'll be sure you're on the list, yeah.
Because they have their own budget, right?
Well, the other thing you need to bring up is who takes care of removing the girls, and what are the contracts with the sewer and the wires?
Right, all, we all need to have that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, we put a number in there.
How many board members are there? There are only two supervisors in here right now, you can turn it off. Thank you.